Call the meeting to order. First up is any items from the public? Okay. If not, then motion to approve the agenda if there's no modifications or changes.
Yes, sir. Motion to approve the agenda for Thursday, August 31, 2023.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further comments? I'm sorry, I was just reading here. I had something pop up on my screen. Any further comments or concerns? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. Um, purchase order log. Tracy's not here, but any questions or concerns on that? Internal budget revisions?
Mr. President, you have one. You have a request from Sheriff Harmon to reduce his materials and supplies line item by $456 to increase his printing line item to satisfy a served property claim.
Okay. Oh, yes, sir. HD is joining us on conference call or calling in, so he is here today this by phone and he's watching us on the, on the worldwide web, aren't you, HD?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good to have you here. Take care wherever you're at.
How do we look?
Yeah, how do we look? Jim wants to know.
Be honest.
Looking pretty fresh today, Jim.
Alrighty, um, let's see here. Change in status. Had a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Larry Hess, assessor for Tanner Bridges. As a field data collector, appraiser with an annual salary of $36,000, effective date is to be decided. Change in status received from the Honorable Anthony Patrissi, county clerk for Jennifer Miller. She is receiving an increase in salary due to years of service. Her salary will go from $46,000 to $48,000 effective September 1, 2023. Change in status received from Randy Lilly, emergency management director for, Jaleen?
Jalen.
Jalen, I'm sorry. Jalen Hessen, for a step increase from firefighter one to firefighter two with a salary increase of $54,227 to $56,500 effective September the 6th. Letter of retirement received from the sheriff's department for Trampus Boils effective, effective September the 8th, 2023. Letter of resignation received from emergency communications for Samantha Stone Street effective August the 28th. And that's it. Let's see, approval of the amendments. Vice President Coconera was not present, so we'll pull those out. Can I have a motion to approve the amendments for August 17, 2023?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries.
I abstained.
One abstention. Commission calendars. Find it here on the, I do know that we will be closed on Monday.
And don't forget the Parks and Rec, Labor Day breakfast, Labor Day.
Yes, indeed.
Funny, funny time, even.
What else do you do on Labor Day besides labor, right?
Have breakfast.
And then we'll be here on the 7th for a regular meeting. Let's see here, there. Tuesday, 5:00 PM Sewer District, 6:00 PM Stormwater District, and 6:00 PM Planting Commission on Tuesday the 5th. On the 6th, we have 4:00 PM at Telemont, nothing on the 7th or the 8th. Any changes to any of those? Okay. We have a canceled check request. We have a bond release for Yorkshire Glen Phase 1, Section 2, and, Section 2 and Borough area grading. BCP file number 105-05, grading permit number 04422, performance bond number 8000515497. Engineering Department's giving that recommendation. Bond release Yorkshire Glen Phase 1, Section 1, grading, BCP file number 032-04, grading permit number 03496. Performance bond number 80015495. Engineering Department's making that recommendation. Have a bond release for Elizabeth Station, Section F, Phase 3B, lots 214 to 217, and lots 238 to 250. BCP file number 050-07 tied to BCP file number 2007-094 and 2007-095. Letter of credit number 10003850-44. Engineering Department's making that recommendation. And a bond release Elizabeth Station, Section F, Phase 2 and 3C. BCP file number 11 dash, I'm sorry, 119-05 tied to BCP file number 2007-094 and 2007-0095. Letter of credit number 100038500-45. Engineering Department's recommending that. Have a bond reduction, Dollar General, 129 Eagle School Road, BCP file 2203-067 tied to BCP file 2206-075 and 2308-262. Grading permit letter of credit number 784, and Engineering Department's making that recommendation. Any questions for Doug on that? If not, motion to approve the consent, consent agenda.
Sue moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. HD was talking about, I think he was on mute. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. Correction of assessment logs. Enforcement of assessments, Mr. Hess. The podium is yours.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, I got a few this, this week. We have, I think, total of personal property office errors. I think we have a total of 15. Uh, we had to correct, we need to get your approval on, for the reasons that's listed on there. There's a total up to $5,703.23 for this 15 property.
Do I have a motion for the 15 personal property tax exonerations due to office error?
H, you want to do that?
HD?
I'll make a motion to, yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve exonerations of personal property taxes due to office error.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. Uh, 15 real estate tax exonerations, reason for office error, and total value of exonerated, $11,184.09.
Yeah, most of them were that, you can see, for Panhandle Homes, we, they transferred property common area or to homeowners association and didn't get names changed, so.
Okay.
That's the majority of all those. We had to correct those.
Okay.
You're correct on that number.
Okay. Motion to approve the total value of $11,184.09.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Uh, one application for consolidation of property.
Yes, sir. We do for Mark Frye. He had two parcels in Garestown District, that 11 parcel, 6.5 and 6.6. And he wanted them together so he could just get one tax bill, so we need to get your approval on that.
Okay. Motion to approve the consolidation of property.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed.
Aye.
Motion carries. That, that delay was an a for, I could tell.
Thank you, thank you.
Alrighty. Board and meeting reports. Mr. Boyd, do you have anything for us?
I don't have anything to report this week.
No.
I'd hope to attend the CBD meeting, but it has got moved, and so I was not able to attend it.
Okay. Mr. Barnhart?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I had a Board of Health meeting at the same time I had a Public Service Water District meeting. I attended the Board of Health meeting. They voted in as chairperson Lisa Polling and vice chairperson Craig from Morton County. The EPI report, because lime is on the increase because it's that time of year. They've also hired a office assistant to work with dog bites because they were getting behind and doing their dog bites. Kara gave a report, of course, they had, she elaborated on the difficulty they had getting the air show, but they went the extra mile and they were supposed to do them Friday, they couldn't approve them Friday, they came back Saturday and got them all approved.
Very good, I highly commend them for their efforts to make it to make it happen.
It evidently was pretty bad. And.
But it was all taken care of.
Yeah. And, oh, Bill gave the profit loss from last year and income was 2.8 million dollars. A lot of that, of course, was grants mostly from COVID and expenses were 2.3. But a lot of that and that was overage will have to be given back to the state because of, you know, not used, not used in the grants.
Right.
So the profit is not as extraordinary as what these numbers show. And that was my report.
Very good. Mr. Catley?
Did not have any board meetings since last, our last meeting and but Eddie and I did meet Monday morning with Mark Baldwin, Andy Blake, Bob Williams and the C E C crew on the, out of Baltimore Street with potential to put pickled ball courts on that property, which is our property. The other thought they were going to put them in Faulkner, which is our property as well. And I think it was a general consensus of that meeting that that is a great place to do it. The city had appropriated $100,000, actually about two years ago for market money to build four courts. We're actually going to get bids, maybe to look at building eight courts instead and it's going to be a great place to do it, so. And during that meeting, we also talked with them in terms of P O Faulkner Park. One of the issues that's been over there, which again is county property, has been the parking lot there where the ball fields are. And it's been a difficult situation for years and hopefully we can work together along, including the school board to potentially maybe get that paved as well. The city is actually going to be paving Stevens Street there and the other street that goes up past the parking lot. Jefferson Asphalt or whatever they're called now, has the bid to do that.
W N L.
Yeah, and so maybe we can secure a really good price to get it done. And it's something that I'm hoping that we all can work together to maybe make that happen, to improve our properties.
Very good. Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Coconare?
Yes, sir, other than that, the other meeting that I had was Gary and I were on R and R on Tuesday. And, yeah, they wanted to discuss the annual report that Matt had prepared. And I think we all recognize that Matt did a really a good job on pulling all that information together. And so I want to thank him for that. But, you know, just normal good stuff with R and R, it was a good morning, wouldn't you say, Gary?
It was great.
Yeah, so that's about it.
Okay, I actually, Matt and I were on W E P M on Monday morning, talking about the state of the county address that he had put together. I thought it was a very good meeting that we had and we touched a little bit about the air show. But I didn't want to take too much of the thunder away from from Nick and because I knew he was going to be on the show pretty soon, so. I did attend the air show and it was probably at least Saturday, at least 15,000 people there, maybe more. And on Sunday, I would say it was real close to the 10 to 10 to 12,000, so.
I guess you had no problem with the parking spot, did you?
Not on Sunday, but on Saturday it was busy, so, yeah, I stayed home on Sunday, so.
I know I have different comments I had received from folks that attended, they was really excited and thought it was a great show.
Yeah, but also publicly and I think we probably, if Nick and I get together or maybe just us, also like to send a letter to our governor thanking him for the contribution he made for the air show, which which was very nice and considerable.
Any shade, I know shading was a problem because it was hot and sunny and did they provide shade for, you know, for people to rest?
There were tents, there were areas of rest, they had what they call water buffaloes around certain areas to, you know, for hydration. But most of the show line had had tents up that you could get into, but it's kind of hard to have tents at an air show, I mean, you're. One thing you want is good sunscreen and good sunglasses at an air show. And a hat, yeah.
Most of the crowd was really out of town, visitors, people who live in local. Nice we got that one percent.
It was a great turnout.
Yeah, it would be. Yeah, you're right, H D.
I do have a thing to report that I missed, if it's okay, I don't mean.
Sure, go ahead.
But in on the air show, so I had a meeting with the city manager, the mayor, Alton Associates, Fire Marshals, City Fire Marshal, State Fire Marshal. And we had a meeting about the perks for building at the roundhouse and we finally got that permit through, so that is moving forward and construction should start sometime mid-September, with earlier steps there.
Very good. Alrighty, any board and commission vacancies from anyone? I have one, I'd like to appoint Philip Borrow to the Fire Board if I can do so, if I can get a second.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries, unanimously. Councilperson issues, Mr. Coconare, Vice President.
Yes, sir, as Commissioner Catley stated on Monday, we met with the city at 750 Baltimore Street. Previously, there was, there were to be pickleball courts built at P O Faulkner. And what there's, it would take quite a bit of fill and excavation over there to accomplish that, so. I had, I had suggested this site over a year ago for a skateboard park because of its location and its terrain. So we met and we feel that that's a really a good location for that to be built. The city, you know, will do most of the funding for it, they've already committed those funds. And, you know, obviously, we will provide the real estate for it to be done. I just think it's a great opportunity. And Steve had had mentioned maybe as many as eight courts could be built there, which would lend itself to some tournaments and that kind of stuff, so. Just wanted to be able to, you know, have this discussion and make a motion that that land be used for recreation.
I know there's a big dispute in Washington, D.C. over the noise, okay, generated by these pickleball tournaments and sports. Is anything being done to alleviate that?
Well, we, we looked at that and across the street are some homes, some apartments across the street, you know, but the area that more likely, if it was in a quiet neighborhood with no cars, no street through it, you know, I would certainly understand that, but I really don't think it would be offensive to those neighbors.
I have no idea, I didn't know it was offensive to begin with, but evidently.
Yeah, the, the ball is, it's not quiet like a tennis ball, it's, it makes a little.
Click.
Yeah.
It's a wiffle ball, basically, hard plastic with no air.
Never played the game, never even seen the game played.
The paddle's solid, instead of like in tennis, it's a net, it's a string, this is a solid, so it does make noises. And on the other side of the creek where there's residents, there's actually a big tree line there, it's going to bumper it too. And to me, it's the best place in Martin'sburg to build the courts, the city's putting up 100,000 and they want to build in Martin'sburg. And this is a much better location than P O Faulkner.
I have no problem with that and will parking be, current parking?
The parking there would be great.
More than efficient.
It's already there.
From the 750.
Yes, it's, it's really a good opportunity and I, I shared, of course, Gary weighed in on this, but, you know, that we could even probably provide some, a camera that would catch that area off of Baltimore Street building for security and that kind of stuff, so.
Are we putting anything into this other than the real estate?
Actually, I was asked by the city manager and told that I, you know, certainly could not commit without speaking to the council.
Well, I could see some landscaping and of course, a path connecting it to the parking lot and, you know, that sort of stuff. That may be, that may come into it.
Once you go through the bid process, then that can be determined, but the other issue is they have 100,000, Parks and Rec is in a position to add more funding to that project if needed, so.
I have no, no problem with us providing a little bit of funding, just, you know, to fill it out or, you know, that sort of stuff.
Yeah, let's, let's see how it, how it, how it works out.
Would these court, would these courts be lit?
Yes.
Well, it's going to be bid eventually.
Yeah, it's going to be bid as such, H D.
Mr. President, we have a bid.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted, and then so possibly might need like park benches and seating and some other things in there?
Yes, sir. Hey, we got a bid opening at 9:55, but we'll go ahead and take a motion to approve the, the pickleball court land use.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that, that we work in conjunction with the city and provide the real estate at 750. And Parks and Rec and provide the real estate.
I would like to second that motion.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries, now we have a bid opening, R F P, Gary, you want to kind of give us a little bit?
This is a request for proposal for ammunition for law enforcement. It has been duly advertised on the website, in the newspaper and met all the legal criteria. It's for 80,000 rounds of 9mm, looks like range ammo, 80,000 rounds of 223 range ammunition, 30,000 rounds of 9mm duty ammo and 20,000 rounds of 223 duty ammo.
Okay, first bid is from Mountaineer Custom Cartridge, type of equipment is 9mm, 124, 124 grains FMJ. Yeah, the range, okay, quantity needed 80,000, price unit is, or total price is $20,000. 223, 80,000 rounds at $29,600. 9mm duty ammo, 30,000 rounds at $11,100. 223 duty ammo, 20,000 rounds at $28,500. In total, for all equipment is $89,200. That was bid number one from Mountaineer Cartridge. Second bid is R T P Armor out of Lincoln, Nebraska. 9mm ammo, 80,000 rounds at $22,400. 223 ammo, 80,000 rounds, $39,960. 9mm duty ammo, 30,000 rounds is $24,000. And 223 duty ammo at 20,000 rounds is $30,000. Total bid is 116,360. Okay, third bid. It's a Kiesler Police Supply Incorporated out of Jefferson, Indiana. 9mm ammo, 80,000 rounds, $22,358.40. 223 ammo, 80,000 rounds, $39,680. 9mm duty ammo, 30,000 rounds, no bid. And 223 duty ammo, 20,000 rounds, no bid. Total bid, $62,038.40.
You're allowed to mix and match these bids, aren't you?
This is just the R F P here, correct? Gary? This is just the R F P here, correct?
Yeah, there should be some.
Jim, let's see if I can find you some numbers. Was there, how many bids were there?
Four.
Four, this would be the fourth bid, I'm sure. Bid number four. This Vance Outdoors, it's kind of faded here, Incorporated out of Columbus, Ohio.
Vance Outdoors, yes.
Okay.
Cleveland, no Cleveland, yeah, Columbus, Ohio.
Yeah, Columbus, okay. 9mm ammo, 80,000 rounds, no price. 223, 80,000 rounds, $34,560. 9mm duty ammo, 30,000 rounds, no price. 223 duty ammo, 20,000 rounds, no price, for a total of $43,560. And we'll give these to the sheriffs to review. Is that it? Alright, that concludes the bidding. Next on the agenda, Mike Lang, Court Marshal, recognition of retiring employee and proclamation, Mike?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. How's everybody's morning?
Pretty good, how are you this morning?
I'm well.
Good.
We come before you today to recognize Sergeant Winiski for her retirement, she became an employee, employment with the county June 1st, 2009.
Correct.
Full time. Becky was here working when I started. I would say she kind of mothered me a little bit when I started, took me under her wings, the do's and don'ts. After promoting her to sergeant, I gave her the task to overhaul our inmate processing, have we moved back and forth and her and another fellow have moved over 12,000 inmates in her four years down there. Zero incident. But I do have a favorite story about you. We had a certain judge during the court, he liked telling them to go into jail. You know, this guy said he wasn't going to jail. Out the door he went, Becky in tow. Becky was holding on her shirt and she was dragging her up the hallway, he weighed 350 pounds. Remember that?
I turned his 3X shirt into a 6X.
But by love of God, he was not getting away from Becky, I can tell you that. Remember that day?
Oh, yeah.
He did, he did come in and apologize when it rained afterwards, apologized to Becky. She left a good impression. Becky's going to leave her home, she took charge, she takes charge, you don't have to wonder what she's thinking because she's there. I love that, I love that. We're going to miss her greatly, you're always welcome to come back and visit. Bring food they like to eat. But if you, Becky, here's your retirement badge and wallet. I know, it's on the, supply chain issue, we're waiting on that, waiting on that. But I, I can't thank her enough for the service to us in Berkeley County. But, uh, I, I can't thank her enough for the service to us in Berkeley County. She has served many judges. She's worked single-handedly with, uh, ERJs and other areas of confinement to make sure everything happened, happened on time. She's been remarkable. Just one of those employees you don't replace. Thank you, Becky.
Say a few words if you like.
I just wanna, well, I want, I want Gary to go around, well, and you, and, uh, I just wanna thank, um, Randy Smith for trusting me and hiring me, and, um, I've had a ball. And I appreciate so much, given the chance that the boss gave me. You know, I wouldn't do anything different. And thank you, guys. Appreciate everything that you do, not only for me, but for the county. Thank you so much.
Yes, indeed.
Well, let me tell you, retirement opens up a whole new phase of your life. What are you gonna do?
I'm gonna, I said, oh, I'm gonna, first year I'm gonna sit in the dirt and clean my garden for my grandkids. That's my first year. I don't wanna do much of anything.
Second year, you're gonna spoil your grandkids.
What?
Second year, you're gonna spoil your grandkids.
They're gonna come and help me in the garden. That's it, yeah. I'm not, I don't plan anything. I like days gone.
Well, I'll tell you, spoiling grandkids has, has been one of the best things.
Then just send them back home, you never hear my kids?
Well, wait, wait till you get great-grandkids.
It's payback.
Great-grandkids get to do it all over you.
Let's see, all grandkids are great, so.
Uh, when you have great-grandkids.
Well, they're great-grandkids.
Yeah.
Becky, thank you.
You might, you might look into, for people my size, there's shirt stretching business on the side.
I can't hear you.
I say for people my size, you might look into a proposed business on the side for shirt stretching business where you could help us big guys out.
Oh, yeah. Oh, thank you.
You got experience at stretching the shirts, so we'll, it might be a good sideline to get in.
I tell you, that, that Judicial Center has never been safer because of the men he's hired. They're all a great bunch of guys. On rate, but they're a great bunch of guys. Gonna love everyone, I hope not.
Yeah, Becky, we'd like to thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
To our, to our court and to, and to us, you know. We have great confidence in your all's ability to have the safest courthouse in this state. I, I would put our folks up against anybody. Your dedication, your loyalty is, is tremendous, and, and I'm glad that you get the opportunity to enjoy your retirement.
Yep.
I don't know about, I don't know about the guy on the side there. He might keep you occupied.
Well, they're gonna take him as if he makes it to September 6th.
Well, congratulations. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
HD, did you wanna say anything?
Uh, just congratulations and thank you for everything. You're doing a great job over there, and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
There's not a whole lot more I can say that these guys haven't said other than a heartfelt thank you for all that you've done. And, um, I think this guy over here, I think he, uh, I'm sorry?
Proclamation?
Yes, I do. I do have proclamation here that, um, we'll read, is that okay, or do you wanna read it? Okay, I'll read. As, whereas Rebecca Winensky began employment with Berkeley County Commission on October the 9th, 2006, as a deputy court marshal, and whereas Rebecca Winensky, uh, was promoted from deputy court marshal to sergeant on January the 15th, 2019, and whereas Rebecca Winensky has served as protected, has served and protected Berkeley County Judicial Center dignitaries, employees, and citizens that entered the doors of the premises, and whereas Rebecca has chosen to retire on August 31st, uh, 2023, the Berkeley County Commission would like to thank her for her dedication and service to Berkeley County and its citizens. Now therefore be it resolved that Berkeley County Commission wishes, that wishes the best to Rebecca Winensky on her retirement and much future happiness on this day adopted, August the 31st, um, 2023. Thank you very much. Phil, you wanna say a few words?
I can't. There's nothing I can say, Mr. God, Jim, or me. This is for her. She's earned it.
She's earned it. Yes, indeed. But we will get this signed and get you a copy, that's for sure. So, thank you very much, and we're gonna take a break and get some pictures.
We have one more presentation.
Oh.
If you're interested, please, please check off the end of the page.
Okay, thank you.
You have one more presentation.
Okay, sounds good. Come on, go on to the next item on the agenda.
Yeah, you have pictures for it.
Okay. All right, everybody that's here, hang around for a while then. Aaron Gartner, or Garrettner, I'm sorry, Transition Agent, Jobs and Hope, West Virginia, Proclamation, International Overdose Awareness Day. Come on up.
She's in the hallway.
Oh, she's in the hallway, okay.
Did you adopt the proclamation?
Oh, no, how about a motion to adopt the proclamation, um, for Rebecca Winensky? Do you have a motion?
So moved.
You'll have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Come on up, Aaron. Oh, my goodness, we got an entourage, okay.
How are you?
Make sure they don't try and sell her. Ready for us?
Yes, indeed.
Good morning.
The podium is yours. Good morning.
I just wanna say thanks for having us today, um, and then, of course, thanks to Penny for everything. I think that's a unanimous, uh, thank you across the room. Uh, and then, of course, thanks to all the folks that came with us today. Um, I'm Erin Garrettner, uh, I'm a transition agent for the Jobs and Hope program, uh, and I'm gonna tell you a little bit about what Jobs and Hope is, uh, of course, how we work with Day Report, uh, and then we have so a few folks that are gonna be graduating from Jobs and Hope today. Um, and before we kinda get into that, the whole reason we're here specifically today, uh, it wasn't just kind of like the next, um, block that was available, we sought out the 31st. Uh, today is International Overdose Awareness Day, uh, that's why the room got really purple when we kinda all came in, and so today's a really tough and solemn day, uh, 'cause folks are dying, uh, and have been and still are, and we have a lot of resources, uh, and a lot of folks, um, helping to reduce those numbers, and it's working, uh, but wanted to take a really kind of tough and heavy day and show some possibility for folks in recovery, and so some hard work, uh, for folks in recovery. Um, so, Jobs and Hope was founded by the, announced by the governor in 2019. I've been in place since then, uh, covering Berkeley County. I've also served on the Community Criminal Justice Board since then. Um, we work with folks who are facing barriers to employment. Uh, sphere of the program is for folks in recovery, uh, so we work closely with Day Report, and really lucky for that, because they are my largest referral source, um, for this program. And more importantly, their referrals are most likely to convert to participants. Uh, so they send me good folks, uh, and they support their folks. And so we have a lot of their, uh, staff here today, um, and we have four folks that are graduating today. Uh, one works for you all, and the other three have, um, gone through Day Report, uh, so they had to balance Day Report, Drug Court, parole probation, all those kinds of things, working, family, uh, and of course, Jobs and Hope. Uh, and then the biggest thing with Jobs and Hope is education and training. That's what we exist to do. Our partners for that are adult education, uh, and then James Rumsey and Blue Ridge, who all have represented us here today, uh, because that's who, they completed these trainings, so. Um, so two of the graduates that we have here today, um, oh, that you did. And it's really exciting that they're both here, um, because one, James Davis, uh, he actually, um, he double dipped on training. Uh, he completed a Class A CDL at James Rumsey and recently completed, uh, a welding training, and I don't even know, did you know you passed your exam?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and so he was able to, um, complete both of those programs, uh, started his own business, um, was with Day Report, all that kinda stuff, so we're really excited, uh, to have him complete two really tough and time-consuming, uh, in-demand, uh, you know, trainings for this area, 'cause I'm sure you all know somebody that, uh, could use somebody with a CDL or has some welding experience. Um, and then Andrew Knoller, who is, uh, your employee, uh, he is the first, uh, in the Eastern Panhandle on my caseload to start and finish a two-year degree as a participant. Um, and he didn't just finish it, he graduated with high honors, um, from Blue Ridge with an Associate's of Applied Science in Computer Networking Engineering.
Software engineering.
Software engineering, there it is. Uh, and so we're just really excited to let you all know that this is the work, obviously, that they had to do, um, with their own recovery, like I said, prioritizing all the things that were putting on them, um, and that they did all of it with the support of the rest of your employees at Day Report, uh, to make all this possible. And they both came to Jobs and Hope because of referrals from Day Report. Uh, so we wanted to take time to acknowledge that. Um, and then, of course, uh, with Jobs and Hope being a governor's initiative, um, if we can have you, uh, give them some certificates and tell them what's, what's going on and let them help the governors in.
Sure. Gentlemen, thank you. It's, uh, it's great to be with you today, and it's, it's, uh, worth a note that Berkeley County's leadership in altern, alternative sentencing and, uh, your Day Report program, those things are important, so. But I, I, as you know, I represent Governor Jim Justice in the eastern part of West Virginia, and Jobs and Hope is a big program that the governor, uh, dreamt about one day and created some years ago, and I have, uh, congratulations from Governor Justice for the two completers in a letter that I'd like to share with you right now. It says, "Congratulations on your completion of Jobs and Hope West Virginia program. During my 2019 State of the State speech, I announced my plan to get our people back to work with a program that would help connect resources all across the state to people who need an extra helping hand. My wish for you is now that you have completed the program, is that you will be able to show the world what you're capable of achieving. We have so many resources and job opportunities in the mountain state that I know you will use to your advantage. I look forward to hearing about all the accomplishments you and your fellow program graduates. If you should need any assistance in the future with career opportunities or additional training, please contact your transition agent or my office. Let me again congratulate you and wish you all the best in your endeavors. Signed sincerely, Governor Jim Justice." And he sent up a certificate for each of them as well. For James and Andrew.
Aaron, is there a proclamation up there?
Sure. And then, before we get to that, one of the things I wanted to also mention, um, there's two other graduates that couldn't be here today. Uh, Jobs and Hope did such a good job there at work, and, uh, that's what, that's where we want them to be. Um, and one is Daniel Anno, uh, who also completed a Class A CDL from James Rumsey, and Michael Marcasani, who did, uh, the forklift training at James Rumsey as well. So wanted to make sure that they were, uh, mentioned, and we're gonna be recognizing them tomorrow evening, um, so.
Okay. Yeah. Would you all like to say something, and?
I just wanna say thank you for the opportunity. I'm grateful for what you've done, uh, getting the chance to, I, I didn't deserve all the chances that I got, honestly, but, uh, last time, I made it work, you know, and I'm really appreciative of that. Yeah, I'm just glad I got the opportunity to prove myself, and I'm happy where I'm at, and I love the people I work with, and the people I call friends, you know, and my coworkers, you know, just like you.
You're most certainly welcome, and thank you for showing a way that, that there is another way out there, so.
He just said a nice thing about Jack Lang.
Just saying, that's what I heard. Yeah, I did hear that. Tim?
Well, she wanted to speak, yeah.
They're gonna have you to open my card.
I didn't come prepared to talk, but I wanna thank the Day Report, all the staff of the Day Report, Aaron and staff and myself, and especially Tom, uh, Sam, Tom's old.
I, I just wanted to highlight, um, the average person can't appreciate how challenging it is to come out of the other side of active addiction. Raise your hand if you've seen The Walking Dead. Anybody familiar, some of you are familiar with that show. Active addiction is kinda like that, and in fact, some of you all have probably driven around parks or seen the effects of some of these substances now. People, people on the street, literally, you, you ever seen anybody like that? Coming out on the other side of active addiction is probably one of the most single, difficult things that a person can, can do. And you all put in the work to do that. I mean, um, you all are normal, intelligent, um, valued people. What's that? But, but, but active addiction changes a person, literally puts you inside of this, this prison, and you can behave in a way that's not who you are in your heart. I'm proud of you guys. I probably don't do a good enough job of highlighting, um, the success stories through our programs. I talk about money a lot and, and the, the financial impact, and that's important, but this is more important right here, um, people whose lives have been restored and are working and with their families now. I'm proud of you guys. Thank you all for being here today.
Okay? Little proclamation up there you would like to read for us?
Oh, sure. So we have a proclamation for International Overdose Awareness Day, which is being celebrated internationally today. So whereas the Berkeley County Commission recognizes today, August 31st, as International Overdose Awareness Day, a solemn occasion that raises awareness about the devastating impact of drug overdoses worldwide, and whereas the Berkeley County Commission acknowledges September as National Recovery Month, a time to honor and support individuals who have overcome substance use disorders and to promote the importance of recovery in our community. And whereas the Berkeley County Commission wholeheartedly celebrates the dedicated staff and resilient participants of Berkeley Day Report Center, whose unwavering commitment has positively impacted the lives of countless individuals and the community as a whole. Whereas the Berkeley County Commission proudly supports the Jobs and Hope West, proudly supports Jobs and Hope West Virginia, the state's comprehensive response to the substance use disorder crisis, and commends their partnership with Berkeley Day Report Center, um, what we're here today. Uh, whereas the Berkeley County Commission extends its heartfelt congratulations to the graduates of Jobs and Hope West Virginia program, who have not only triumphed over their own challenges, but also have become valuable employees of Berkeley County Commission and/or has successful completers of Berkeley County Day Report, including Andrew Knoller, Michael Marcasani, Daniel Anno, and James Davis. Now therefore be it resolved that the Berkeley County Commission reaffirms its commitment to being a recovery-friendly and second chance friendly employer, recognizing the immense contributions of individuals in recovery, both within the workplace and within the broader community, and adopted on this 31st day of August, 2020.
Thank you. Uh, can I have a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved. Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
All right.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Very good. And we will, uh, take a break and get some pictures unless there's something else.
Hold on, hold on. What a great success story. And, you know, all those folks behind you, you know, have helped get these, get these guys here, but like, James, Andrew, Daniel, and Michael, uh, who are graduating this program. Uh- supports Jobs and Hope West Virginia, the state's comprehensive response to the substance use disorder crisis and commends their partnership with Berkeley Day Report Center. Um, we're here today. Uh, whereas the Berkeley County Commission extends its heartfelt congratulations to the graduates of Jobs and Hope West Virginia Program, who have not only triumphed over their own challenges, but also have become valuable employees of Berkeley County Commission and/or has successful completers of Berkeley County Day Report, including Andrew Knoller, Michael Marcasani, Daniel Lano, and James Davis. Now therefore be it resolved that the Berkeley County Commission reaffirms its commitment to being a recovery-friendly and second chance friendly employer, recognizing the immense contributions of individuals in recovery, both within the workplace and within the broader community. And adopted on this 31st day of August, 2020.
Thank you. Uh, can I have a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So move. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign, oppose, motion carries. Very good. And we will, uh, take a break and get some pictures unless there's something else.
Hold on, hold on. Mr. President. Um, what, what a great success story. And, you know, all those folks behind you, you know, have helped get these, get these guys here, but like James, Andrew, Daniel, and Michael, uh, who are graduating this program, uh, congratulations to you. I, I know it had to be difficult and you've overcome that. And you, I hope, will go back and help somebody else who may be struggling, uh, with this addiction. And there's more. You know, this commission, before I came here, it, it did include Mr. Barnhart and, and Mr. Whitaker, uh, they invested, uh, in, into this program. They could have turned their head and act like they didn't even exist, but that's not what they did because they knew that, that it was a serious issue and it needed serious help. And they've been able to hire the right people, Tim, to get them in place and Tim has hired a great team over there. So, you know, from the judicial center, uh, the help that comes out of the court system to peo, to get people in addiction help, instead of placing them in jail, to be able to get them help, get them clean, get them healthy, back with their families, being productive, enjoying, and being happy in this world. Those things are really important. So congratulations to every one of you and thank you for what you do.
I'd like to include Doug Copenhagen in that assessment to really lend Berkeley County into the drug rehabilitation program.
Yes, indeed. Anybody else?
Thank you for what you're doing. We appreciate it very much.
Yep. Tim, you want to say anything else or? We're, okay.
Much obliged to you all. You all are the ones that support these programs and it made it possible for these folks to take, uh, take their lives back.
Joe, anybody want to come on up and say a few words?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Good morning.
So proud to be here and be part of a system in this county, like you said, that doesn't turn an eye to the addiction issues that are very much present in this county. And I'm so proud to work with Tim, uh, in his office and in our office. Uh, we work hand in hand and it's, it's had a financial benefit, but like Tim said, this is, this is the real benefit. So congratulations to the graduates. Um, we're all proud of you. Keep it up.
Thank you. Pictures? We're about, we're going to take a break and get some pictures here right now. Sorry to, if I'm acting like I'm trying to push through, it just gets emotional for me too, so.